It's five thirty, I'll call the meeting. We're bringing the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, committed as well with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for attending in person and on line. First item on the agenda is the approval of two sets of minutes for a meeting from January fifth. We need to approve. You have a second?
I have a second.
You have a second? All in favor, suit department say aye.
Aye.
You have a second sign? The special minute from last party is special meeting. January fifteenth.
You have a second one?
We approved a vote.
Yeah, I thought we approved a vote.
Okay.
It said vote minutes.
Perfect, thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any items of addition to the agenda? Who is this?
Second.
Who is second to approve the agenda as printed? All those in favor, suit department say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Kevin, you're up.
Alright. I just had one more thing about additional two years warranty on a camera surveillance system of X two six hundred fifty hundred dollars, sixty-five cents. So I don't go ahead with that also. Any questions to sound something?
Just one question I had, I think I don't underneath my sign. They put signs up too that this is.
Yes, we just got, we ordered the signs before, but we just got them last week.
Oh, okay. Tell them don't do that.
I will honor ask, we ordered them.
Good idea.
We have ordered four, so you can spread them out.
Just curious, what are they stealing?
Well, the first time around, well, actually, the first time they cut the lockman man for that COVID trailer.
Yeah, for Lake Region District Health, they, they cut the padlock off. Luckily, we didn't have a whole lot in there, but, but masks and gowns and stuff like that for, for COVID testing. They didn't seem to bother. It looked like they might have taken a case of N ninety-five masks. I don't know if they were selling them on the corner or what, but.
Well, about two weeks after that, we lost batteries on one of our trucks. They cut the cables. Took two batteries, truck, truck battery, not like they did in the pickup. And now, the next weight of the last one we lost was a pickup. He accidentally left the keys in it. They were checking the mileage on it and he left the keys in it. So the only thing with how it got out the gate was there was a search and rescue call on Saturday. On Thursday, Friday, we checked the mileage. I guess it happened on Thursday, but anyway, on Saturday, there was a search and rescue call. That's the only thing we could figure how it got out the gate. It was a nineteen eighty-five. More than half a fifty, but pushing beside the point, but. Now, we talked to one of the deputies the other day and he thinks maybe it's out on the rez, but first we gotta go through them to get back and actually prove it from that, so we haven't got it back yet.
Do you need to have the vaccinations in that?
Oh, no, oh, they're way too expensive. Keep them in the trash. Yeah, no, they either have to be in the freezer or the refrigerator, no.
So would this pickup period be insured or? Not yet, we're still trying to see if we can get it back.
We've talked to the contractor, insurance.
What color were they? Huh?
White?
White with a long box and maybe they're too much gab, no extended gab or nothing. Two wheeled or I don't know, or is this a?
Ford?
Ford.
Two wheel that.
Have you seen it?
No.
It's got county plates on it.
Keep your ice field coming.
Well, I'm sure they're gone.
Yeah, they're gone by yellow.
I'll ask her on the phone.
That was one of the pickup, the pickup that Roger used to haul stuff around, it had the long box, no fuel tanks, no, tool boxes and nothing, it was good for hauling stuff. People use it for that.
Thank you, how are you going to be insurance put on that?
Pretty high.
You know, it's ninety-five miles. I, I suppose it's a thousand, but that.
Thousand or less, I'm sure. I'm positive. Hopefully, the cameras still can be done some days.
They decide, you know.
They actually cut another hole in our fence. You know, it wasn't as bad as the first hole, but they were crawling underneath. You can see where they drove up on the floor we were. And either let a person off or something drove into the fence.
So when did they finally add in the cameras?
I remember right after the meeting, about two weeks ago.
I got some electric fencer, you know.
You know, here's that.
They always have attempted not to put the signs up against the cameras for a month to see if we'd catch any linkers. You know.
The railroad was not that chain link, that's out of the fifty feet beyond others, and now there's a hole in that too or something. I told the city about that, I don't know who's next in the railroad, the city, but I let the city know the hole.
Where did they get that? Wire?
It's just too bad that we gotta have stuff like that happen. Is there any more questions on that? Yeah, one more thing, uh, we have a contractor passport from K L J for the design work on ground twenty-three eight, but we're gonna be land in two years, so this summer we'll be doing the design work to get it ready for bid. And that total amount for that contractor passport is twenty thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. And I just need the motion for a term.
Second. Motion is second for the gentleman assigned the passport for the highway project on ninety-three. Any other discussion?
Looks like a really good fair price to us, to me, it's.
Knocked, all in favor, suit department say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries.
I mean, it's going to be final records for number two and I'll drive this one.
So we got one more small favor to make, but it won't be much.
But it's in time in front and nowhere much behind, so there's obviously time. Last one.
Anything else for Kevin? Kevin, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the COVID nineteen discussion. Month number ten. A lot of you know, one of the things that we need to come up to is access to the building. We wanna open the building up for public access, right now it's by appointment. And remind people that it is by appointment until we go any further, I guess there's a lot of people that front of the front door and knock. The breezeway has been open and it's warm. They can call the department that they're here to visit and access the building that way. The other thing is, is when we do work, open the building, it's been asked, are we gonna supply PPE for our departments? Which I guess probably the the duty thing to do for them, ask them to work and the public to do so as doing the building, but I guess I'll look at that for discussion. So it'd be mask, hand sanitizer, uh, I don't know if we need nitrate gloves, different things like that. Ron, we have some staff that have to attend the new building for meeting people in their homes on occasion. And we'd probably ask up for that. So it's been discussed or asked about whether or not if we would continue paying for that personal protective equipment, keep our employees and the public safe within our buildings. Or if that would come out with the departments on, uh, dieting budgets?
We, excuse me, we received the CAREZAC dollars back, just go back to the general funding, there's plenty of money there, I don't know why we wouldn't just continue to pay for any kind of PPE that anybody in the building needs, whether it's somebody coming in or not, through that. I would assume, I don't know how the how it's gonna look going forward, but I don't know all the initiatives that have been built up to pass in December, but if there's any kind of reimbursement or anything like that, I don't really guess, but and I think there's gonna be a push for another lawsuit, another bill that might do something to that too, so there'd be options, but up until then, I don't, I think it's just, it's no greater than we're gonna pay for it, so it just matters where the dollars come from, we drop CAREZAC dollars, we'll spend it, that's what they're for.
That's what they're given to us. That's what they're given to us. Find out how many masks you use a month.
Well, we, actually, the mask, part of the masks that I'm asking for are for the citizens that we go out to, we come into their homes, do an assessment, and we would ask them to put on a mask, and we would bring masks. So, I don't know, Crystal and I talked about that.
Three hundred, five hundred?
I, I would think five hundred to start, and then hand sanitizer. I, I, that would probably work, uh, they drive, we also transport people, we transport people that we have appointments in Bismarck, Grand Forks, adults that don't have any other transportation, we beat that through general assistance. A lot of times, we have to supply them with a mask. I did get masks early on from the Han website, and I found out that actually that was not and I, I can't remember which one it is, I, I could, I should have used those masks for the public, but not for staff, staff should have purchased or vice versa, I don't know if anyone knows the answer to that, but with one or the other, I found out that I probably wasn't supposed to be using them. Most of the staff bring cloth masks to wear, but it is for, and we have people that come during the time that we're open, we had many people that came into our office that walked right by the masks and the sign that said, go in Kent, the auditor's office and get a mask, and they come to our office. But we're out of the Han website mask that we ordered early on.
You're out of there?
Yeah, very few left, maybe a couple boxes.
Are masks available, I mean, you could get them from a wholesaler or whatever?
Got like Adams, we should use that money.
You got, you got what, a hundred, what was the dollars you were getting? Well, three hundred and some dollars, CAREZAC dollars, you buy something?
Yeah.
So, I think we can, I think we can come up with a, a answer. Yeah, I think the CAREZAC dollars, sitting in the general, like whatever department, whether it's, whether it's social services or public health, whoever it is, we need to work out a bunch of money. It's a difficult thing.
Can I add to that, that I think that one person should be in charge of ordering?
I think that's reasonable, so that we went out before people.
And me, and me paying the bill.
I think that's fair.
So that, we don't have every single office ordering and every.
That is the same problem for us, yeah.
Yes.
I think that's reasonable.
Do you want to order?
Um, Chris is in here, so I'll have Chris.
Yeah, it was, uh, Chris was trying to make sure this.
Okay.
Email what you need to him, and he can order, and you pay for it, okay?
Yep.
Sounds fair to me.
Excuse me, I didn't realize.
No, we're just gonna make them order.
Do you wanna put that in a form of a motion tonight, or you wanna?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll make the motion that, uh.
Are we gonna put a dollar amount spent, or?
I don't think it's necessary, we, we have CAREZAC, I don't think anybody's gonna mind wanting to leave just because they need to. I can't imagine what a mask is costing.
Well, I gotta put these, put these away for later use, I wish.
Probably easy or something like that?
They're, they're running about thirty-five cents a mask, is some of the prices that, that Chris has been looking at. And you know, uh, supplying the bad kind of situation, people that kind of take advantage of the fact that there's heat, so the charge of going, and so masks have, prices have gone up considerably. But I think he's been able to find some at about thirty-five cents a, a mask, uh, I think it was right down there, but you know, I think like you said, we're gonna continue on with this pandemic and continue to try to keep people reasonably safe, and masks are a prudent way to reduce those mitigation or improve those mitigation, I think we should, uh, use it.
I'll make the motion that we use CAREZAC dollars to get, to buy any PPE and safety supplies necessary for any department within the county, and have Chris be the point person for order and get it.
Second. The move is second that we have Chris ordered PPE of the profession of, of personal protective equipment as needed and paid for through the CAREZAC dollars, second by Brown. Any further discussion? Knocked, all in favor, suit department say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Another thing that I think was sent out was some correspondence with Dr. Doug Darling. Encouraging the county to continue with a mask mandate. I indicated that we haven't had one. But we still have to pay for the city and their efforts and encourage the citizens around the county to continue. And with those efforts of mitigating this prepared virus. We have that for those runs from Dr. Doug Darling, we have one from, uh, Matt Groves from Lake Region District Health. Did, uh, receive one from Matt Argu, he was one of the schools. Double way from the schools. And all shared up with commissioners. Mr. Territorial.
Hi, yeah, the, the health department also, very vaccinations, anybody wishing to gather that, they can pass to wear a mask, if they don't have a mask, they get turned away. They were, we had a couple upset people, but, um, they, they don't have masks, they, they don't come in.
Well, the city has the mask, yeah, they.
Well, yes, yes and no, I mean, it's, it's, um, there are some people who wear masks, some people.
Right.
Yeah. But, uh, moving, push the economy to jump on that, that way to keep it going. Uh, it's been proven, I mean, masks and social distancing help with this COVID disease. And we need all the help we can get because we're not getting vaccine very fast. We got a pretty good amount this last time, but for this Thursday, we have a total of ninety doses for four counties. I, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, I don't know what the holdup is, but we love to see it, to get ramped up and going, if we're ready, we've sat down with All True Clinic and with CHI. And they are, if they have any extra doses, they're going to bring them to our deal and help us out and provide personnel to help us. So that's a great deal, having those three entities work together for our community. And, and, but the health district also covers three other counties, so, um, yeah, we we're glad that people wanted a shot, we took a lot of flack for not, for turning people away. But that's just the way it is when you don't have enough vaccine.
Well, I, I think the numbers have really improved, and I think a lot of that goes towards the use of masks and, you know, the community efforts and, and doing so. He, you know, he has super typical Rocky points on his letter, for the first time since March of twenty-twenty. And all grades, all students will be in-person learning within the school district, so, uh, you know, that's one of the goals early on, as we had said, when asking people to use a mask was to get students back into the classroom. And in a saving manner, and I think, you know, mission accomplished, but we haven't completed that task yet, so we wanna keep them there, we wanna keep our community safe. And hopefully, we can do so, you know, lights at the end of the tunnel, we just need to continue working. And we know the right things to do so, so we will, it would be, it would be for us to continue with the mask requirements within our buildings for most employees and visitors of the building. And I don't know if there's been an expiration date on that, but I certainly think so. Uh, I know that was one of the things that the city was, was, you know, their mask mandate, when they initially passed it, wasn't an expiration date on. It wasn't based on anybody else's mask mandate or anything like that, they just did so in the help of preventing the spread of COVID virus, and we need to do so and support them in their efforts. And ask that people who was saying they don't think they're on the phone.
Well, we, we paired up to match the city on the fourth, I think it was the fourth of November, was on back on what, Facebook data? And we published another fifth, so it leaves a fourth and a fifth, I mean, we matched exactly what the city had, whatever essentially, it doesn't have any teeth in it, and we know that, but it still reiterates that we think it's important. And to me, it's, I think it's important that we send the message, we still think it's important, because otherwise, it was meant to mess with the building, because high school basketball games, you get in, you gotta wear a mask, the, my son, when we played basketball, and Ed was there on Saturday, but we did part for it, they're requiring mask usage to come into the gym. Most businesses are still gonna be requiring mask usage, so why would we back off now when we're making progress? All we have to do is ride this thing out for another, hopefully, three, four, five months at the most, get some vaccines and arms. And commend the staff of the public health, our public health statewide, I saw the other day, we are the best state right now at getting vaccine and getting it in arms of anybody in the nation, I think they set up all the, we're at sixty-five percent, and I'm sure, you know, you know, turning the vaccine around and obviously you gotta hold some back for second doses and stuff, we're far better than a lot of places, so we're getting vaccines in arms, which is good. But the quicker, the longer we can stretch ourselves out, I know it's frustrating, but if we could just provide ourselves a little bit more protection, we could get some vaccines and arms, and then we can get back to hopefully a normal summer, I guess that's my, that's my hope. Going to the left baseball. And our mask mandate, in all honesty, never had, at least a mandate, didn't have a, an end date on it. It's just kind of open, open ended, it's never had a final date or anything like that, it was kind of just a matter of time. But I mean, we don't have to necessarily pass another one, but I guess I, I would, I would make the motion that we, we reiterate in you, our, our previous statement from November regarding mask usage and support the city if they continue with theirs at all.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
The move is second, that we continue with, uh, I don't know whether we need a mask mandate or following the city's mask policies, uh, we're actually going.
Can I ask one question, I, I, I thought I heard the city said they were going to continue with their scrap.
They, they are, they have no, no expiration date on it, and Mayor Johnson indicated that was on the agenda for discussion tonight. That if people would like, we would give people an opportunity if we so chose to extend it, or maybe put more teeth to it, if something come down the line, we would put that up for discussion, and if it was really a two, we would start with so.
Yeah, I think that's, for continuity's sake, I think it just makes sense to match up the city for now, and if they said they wanna make a change, then we can have that discussion at that moment.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, suit department say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries, thank you. Alan, did you have anything else?
I was, Kate, to give our input on that, and unless you need, unless you have questions.
I, I know that in our correspondence, you and I, uh, two hundred, was it two hundred and ninety?
Uh, uh, actually, the actual number that they, they doubled up on, it was actually two sixty-nine. But yeah, that was a great day. And we've changed things around a little bit to get the flow a little better. And so we're, we're ready now, we need a little more vaccine. Uh, we're hoping this, uh, this week, but next week, it sounds like we're supposed to start increasing. But we'll see, uh, well, we told everybody that calls, and we're getting, the phone is ringing off the wall. And we put out to the radio station and our Facebook and our page, uh, that we will put it on the radio. Right now, we still have a few, um, first responders left, we got most of them last night, and we're in the seventy-five years and older. We have a lot of questions on, on, okay, I'm seventy-five, and my wife or my husband is seventy-four, seventy-three, you know, can't, well, you can wait until they're ready, or you can get it first, and they'll come in with. We've taken a lot of heat on that one. And, and when we had the first responders in, um, they, these old folks saw, uh, these younger people getting in. Wow, they, they responded very negatively, you know, but they're on the ambulance, they're on the, uh, uh, search and rescue, they're, they're, uh, you know, working for the, this organization or that. Uh, those were the prime people that we wanted to get first, and that wasn't our decision, it was provided for, so. Once we got that across, uh, they, they calmed down a little bit. People really wanted to get the, the shot, even after we told one person that he couldn't get, because he was too young. He, uh, he snuck around to another door, and I looked in, he was already having a shot, so. Uh, we, we're changing things so that doesn't happen. I didn't expect something like that, um, so I guess we, we had to learn a little bit, but, uh, people want this shot, they wanna be done with this, as fast as they can. And so we encourage that, of course, uh, we don't hold any back, we had, we gave our first, second shots today to give some of the first people that got their shots. So, um, and we're working with All True and CHI, which is a good, really good thing for the community. Uh, so we're doing everything we can, uh, plus we're keeping testing going.
So for all the, all the first shots that you gave, though, are they extending out enough second shots?
We will see.
That's my biggest concern, having two shots.
It is a very big concern for us also. We wanna keep that going, uh, we were told that they would be there, I've since learned from other places that this may not be true, but we will see the first one.
Those people that got the first shot have to retake the first shot, if they go over a certain.
No, well, not yet, so it, it's just a minimum of twenty-one and twenty-eight days, it can be farther than that. But we encourage them, we're hoping that they, they stay in there to go to hell and back and have those shots available. But I guess we will find out, the first bunch we got was okay. So hopefully now, but when we have this big bunch come up, uh, we'll have the shots necessary to get in the second, second row.
The only reason I asked on the second shot, how are you gonna go about calling? how are you going to go about calling the people that got the first shot if you don't got enough for the second shot? How are you going to choose on that?
That, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get to it. Again, when, when, we gotta see that we, they don't show up first. Okay? Right now, we're dealing with the vaccine we get and we're, we're getting rid of it. And we don't hold it for very long, especially the Pfizer. It's off the door. And during that, we have a little more play with. It's easier to handle and it, and it's actually quicker. It takes 15 minutes to get a shot for Pfizer and about two minutes for Moderna. So it's all about the prep. But we're doing it as fast as we can. And we're getting fantastic help from the National Guard, even on vaccine. So we get that okay. But so it's, it's going along about as good as we can hope. Other than we can't get enough vaccine.
The National Guard helping you?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I don't know for how long, but.
The money's there for a while.
Yeah, we'll, you know, we'll see.
I certainly applaud you and your staff's efforts for not only the vaccinations, but the testing and everything else that you above and beyond. You know, during a pandemic and under lockdown. And thank you.
We appreciate that. And this is where public health is all about, this kind of stuff. But hours that we have put in, yeah, our staff is definitely not used to those 10 hours. But, and of course, and then the calls at home and when you walk in the grocery store. People are not shy.
Reckonation?
There's not many people here that don't know me. So, yeah, they, they definitely let me know what their wishes are. And, but nothing out of hand yet. So someday we'll all be able to laugh about it. Well, let's hope so. Let's hope so. We would like that very much. But, yeah. Thanks a lot for your support. Take care.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chair, just one further note. We're still on lockdown, right?
Yes, until we decide to open up the building, we're still going to operate as, as we have been for the last few months. And, you know, we haven't wanted to put a date on that just in case numbers do go the opposite direction. Because I think one of the worst things we could do is go tapete or trotter and go back and forth without it being closing or reclosing and that thing. You know, I think, you know, all have a coffee time with Mr. Arndt on Thursday about tonight's meeting. And we will reiterate the fact that the building remains open for department only until further notice. I think that would be prudent for at least the immediate time being. I know there's other businesses that are, are open and we'll cross that, that down the line, making sure that all these staff and departments have adequate DPE within the building. With their access, it would be one of the main things before we unlock the doors. Right now, I think things are working. Coast County, Vonda, Cary, there's still things that seem to be working. Allen's, you know.
I've heard more complaints from the public. I usually tell them that everything must be functioning decent. I think part of it too is the courthouse seems to have a lot of walk-through traffic whenever we're open. So, you know, probably far more than like the city offices or anything like that even. So we want to keep that to a minimum as best we can before just wandering around.
City office is going one way, isn't it, right?
I believe so, yeah. And we've got hallways upon hallways. We're all got to our nose. We can't control access comparatively unless we just keep doing that.
I think I'm providing a lot of public services to the, to the general public that unnecessarily recorded their office, of the city offices. So one of the, one of the reasons to keep it on lockdown or try to clean it up is a little more. Like Alan said, this isn't going to last forever. And maybe not, it's a different motion every day, but.
And we, we do try to pay attention now that the temperature is back and cold fairly. We try to watch the front doors if we see someone standing out there. If it's for a different office, we just either walk them down to the breezeway, that office call, or you tell them that they have someone leaving, so.
And that, that is the good thing about the breezeway in between the memorial building and the courthouse. It's a place where the public can come in and get out of the cold and contact the department if they have made arrangements before they got arrived. And there's a phone dialing, they don't have access to, to contact the department if they wish to visit them. And so they're not standing on the phone. And, and so we'll be doing that as soon as maybe I have another ideas or. Anything else on COVID-19? If not, move on to business. Close all the Sicaria account and transfer the $324 and more cents to the general fund. So. Do you have a motion and a second to close up the? Blended.
Sure. That's a good one.
To close up the Sicaria, that was the next one.
Yes, the loans been paid off for two years.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Raffle permit.
Who do?
Motion to approve the raffle permit. That one, second. Motion, we're on. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Letter of support for law enforcement center. This is for their Cyren project.
Are they intending on, of the RFPs to go get loans or what?
Um, in the short term, yeah. Some of the counties, I think, are going to use the loans. I'm not sure which ones are. I'm not sure which ones are. And we're waiting around this meeting, this month. We have a better idea.
Yeah, because I mean, I suppose you haven't talked completely about split of cost yet or anything.
I think we did.
We did.
But I'm not quite sure what it was. I thought it pretty favorable.
A percentage for the counties and, you know, city companies.
Kind of like I used to.
Well, it's going to be split. It's just a matter of what, what the split was. I mean, I'm just looking at it from the aspect of how large a loan's going to be. Because if a loan is, I mean, I mean, I just assume from our county's perspective, instead of loaning it out, if we absolutely got the dollars back, we'll just, we'll pay ours and go to the general fund. And just, you know, so that way they won't need $400,000 for the loan or whatever. Maybe they'll need half that much for the loans.
I don't know. Remember what meeting it was we talked about?
Yeah.
You know, we talked, I talked again before we. She doesn't have any, you know, we talked.
I remember visiting a vote of the year.
I thought if it's somewhere over 200, it'd be a bad issue.
Yeah, we can handle it in the general office.
But the other three companies, I think, I think we're back in, October, we're back in. They wanted to wait till the end of the year and then decide. I'll think of a better idea. We'll probably have a better idea tomorrow.
Well, regardless, I'll, I'll make the motion that we draft a letter of support for the Cyren program until they can get the best rate possible.
How the chairman said.
The move is seconded that we provide a letter of support for law enforcement center and council. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I think we'll have that information for the next meeting.
I'm about to concern, I'll just carry some.
Gary, would you mind closing that door? A lot of background noise from all the, I think. Uh, request to Northern Plains Resource Conservation and Development Council. Thank you Commissioner Rayfield for bringing this to our attention. Was there a dollar amount put on that, Lucas? Can you recall?
I, I don't. It came up after the last library board meeting. One of the new library board members is also representative on this board. And she said after attending her first meeting, she was looking at all of the different participants and said, oh, you know, Ramsey County does not have any membership. When she informed me, I said, well, we should probably rectify that if, if we're, you know, participating. But I don't bill the dollar amount.
Well, we've always paid a membership. We just, we just, we're a lot of board member or some type of representation on the board if we seek it.
We paid the membership.
Yeah, we've been paying. You're, 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 I believe Paul Overby came in. Obviously, he's on that board probably three or four years ago. Maybe he gave us a presentation on it. Something really interesting. And I think it's only, I might acknowledge you here to, to yourself. That's pretty reasonable.
I think it was two, four years.
That's pretty reasonable.
What you want here is somebody to be on the board?
Well, we put a lot of that. Lucas, do you have any clue how often they meet? Did you, did they say or?
I think it's quarterly, but don't go beyond that. I'm fairly confident it's quarterly.
They're, they're just looking for a representative that doesn't have to be one of us.
No, no. I think it would, I think it would be reasonable to get, to get, you know, how often they meet and things like that just so we have an idea. So if we wanted to maybe advertise for it or something, if somebody would like to be our representative, maybe they're, you know, family farm or something like that. Or they're like.
I, I'd be willing to find all that information out and bring it to the next commission meeting. And then at that point, we can decide if we're going the route where we're appointing one of ourselves to that board or if we're going to look for a member from the community. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Worth a quick one, thank you.
Does anybody know what we've done in the past?
We, we've always paid membership and never had a member on the board.
They never had a member?
Yeah, been a lot of them, we've never had one. I believe that some of the memberships, there are other people from Ramsey County, but they're, they are representing other entities from the county, like the Soil Conservation District, things like that. I know they've done a lot of work with cover crops, things like that, forage, nice stuff, so it's, it's interesting.
We'll put this on the agenda for next meeting, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get all the relevant information and make sure you all get it before the meeting next time. But we can discuss that.
Perfect, thank you. Do you want a motion to table that? So moved?
Hold a second.
Do you have a motion and a second to table the discussion on, uh, going to the Northern Plains Resource Conservation and Development Council? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Oh.
Opposed, same sign? Motion to table that COVID-19. Uh, discussion on interim for state's attorney. Gary, would you mind coming forward to the podium? So you can hear it.
No problem. Um, so it does not require that you appoint an interim lawyer through the full order interview process. So the assistant state attorney technically continue on as the same partner as the state's attorney. There is no requirement of that.
There is no requirement?
There is no time requirement in the appointment process. Unless you have an election coming up, whether it be.
So within the interim of, of de-legalizing or the assistant, uh, modernly, uh, and staff, be looking, continue on with the interim case.
Yeah, we're, we're looking through the calendar. We may be ready for 10, 12, 13 to help. So in that, we would not be able to handle adjusting before, done with state's cases. I've reached out to the Nelson County State's Attorney who is willing to provide some backup if need be. I have a heart for him, but he's still a little bit and there's one over and can't make the right decision. But I would think that if it got even longer before, before March, I think the person I want to consider is that one.
Well, if we meet our deadlines in our aggressive interview schedule that we need one interview for applicants, maybe depending on applicants and their availability, uh, being more fully, hopefully, done on the.
Right.
Watching.
A lot of stuff. We have a lot of talks and lots of staffs in the office. If it became an issue, it certainly allowed. I mean, it's something the commission could look at doing, appointing in the right person. While, for instance, John.
Well, while we have you here, I would still want to thank you for everything you've done at the county over the past several years. You filled up the position very strategically and represented the county very, very vicious. I guess you, you've got a very outstanding job. We hate to see you go, but we're very happy for the opportunity that we have personally and personally. And we're going to answer.
Thank you. I appreciate those words. It was a heck of an opportunity that you showed on me back in 2017. Certainly has been very rewarding. I appreciate it. I wish you the best.
Thank you again, and what did you also?
I'm going to chip in and say I'm angry. I was supposed to have an easy portfolio this year. And then you go and do this. I honestly.
I am.
No, not to put the bill.
Thanks for your service.
Very curious.
Thank you.
Crystal, did you have anything to add from an HR standpoint for going through the process?
Nope, Alan, I think we're good.
Uh, approve the wire, a three-year contract with Village. And I think everybody has a copy of the one-year contract with the Village, uh, services and the three-year. Crystal, you utilize the Village quite a bit with some of the HR training that you've done. I always have to, uh, a video presentation or, you know, as a class, if you presented and it was done through somebody through the Village, it kind of, you know, it went very well.
Is there any advantage doing three years instead of one? Like a better price or something like that?
We just lock you that what?
You lock in that price instead of a higher price? Over the year to year?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, I think we've been, we've been happy with them up to this point. It's been a good service, correct?
How many years?
The Village? We've been at the Village as long as I've been on the case.
Yeah.
It's been at least six years. And it's, it's a pretty reasonable price for the support that you have for the year. So I'll, I'll make the motion that we lock in the three-year contract.
Thank you.
Okay, a little consented. And we go through your contracts with Village. Any further discussion? Crystal, you're happy with it?
Yeah, yeah.
Any changes you'd like to see on the contract?
Um, I guess I could, I didn't see. The main thing would be make sure we get our pre-training in there because it really is a big deal. But otherwise, the service they provide. It's been really good. It's the same.
Yeah, it's the same.
The only, the only thing that changes is the, is how many numbers for, um, full terms. And we just always keep it at the same, no matter what the fluctuation is. I mean, you just always keep it at the same, no matter what the fluctuation is, we just keep it. If we have vacancies or not, we just keep it at that number, because you never know when you're going to fill it.
Jerry, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Visitors and delegations. Anybody online? No? Rodney Horry, director of Mountain Heights, anything?
Don't have any.
Thank you for attending.
You get to leave tomorrow.
Any other announcements? If not, that's the end. You have a still party at that?